All right, we're going to call our meeting back to order. Everybody here that needs to be here. And we're going to move to item E on new business. Brian and Zach, you got that? Page 374 in your book. Are we waiting on anybody else? No? Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. Really what this is, is just an introduction of our consultants. His name is Robert Jordan from the Northeast Florida Regional Council. And he's going to kind of go over at a very high elevation what the EAR is and what it means for the county. Robert?
We'll get you all back to Jacksonville soon. Sorry we had to postpone for a while.
Thank you. Robert Jordan, Northeast Florida Regional Council. The year process is part of state statutes. It's part of, it's part of the requirements of the state. Every seven years, all jurisdictions have to review their comprehensive plan to address any compliance issues with recent legislative changes. So this is part of that process. The year is coming up with the deadline in October. So we've been contracted out to get these compliance updates transmitted by that point to the state reviewing agencies. The year process is composed of not only text amendments that we're working on with addressing many changes to the comprehensive plan relating to statutory changes over the last few years. And we know that you guys had an update in 2021. So looking at those periods after that to address some of the major legislative changes. For an example, there was one passed last year requiring all communities within what's called basin management action plans to have a list of projects that are associated with nutrient reduction adopted in the comprehensive plan. So there's just examples like that that are related to those legislative changes. Most of those are text amendments, but there's also updates that are not as part of compliance with legislature, but compliance with other regional entities like the St. John's River Water Management District. The regional water supply plan was updated in December. And within an 18-month time period of the update of the regional water supply plan, all jurisdictional water supply plans have to be updated in compliance with that. So they're dealing with the water projection numbers and demand numbers associated with that plan. So part of that is updating some of those support documents as well. And map series have also been proposed to be updated, not necessarily addressing legislative changes, but just data updates if there's more, if there's better available data sources for those map series. So those are the changes we have proposed and we're putting forward. The county planning department has looked at them and they'll be reviewed through the process. We do have a meeting in two weeks where we actually have a presentation for all of you to explain, go in more detail about the changes. And also we can go into some of the legislative changes that have happened over the last few years to explain some of the changes that have happened with planning. One of the big ones is Live Local Act. So we can kind of explain a little more in detail of those as well. Hopefully, we will have in the process, planning board meeting in September and then transmittal by October to meet that deadline. So that's kind of the process we have looking forward to that. Any questions?
Commissioner Turner?
I've been doing land development for a long time, since the late 80s. I understand that when you go through the year process, as well as when you write or amend your comp plan or your land development code, whichever one it is, that there's usually two ways to skin that cat, at a minimum of two ways to skin that cat. Sometimes, but it's very, very infrequently, is that you have to do an exact certain thing. You just have to accomplish the goal usually that they set out that you have to accomplish. And how you get there is usually up to you. I would just please implore you, when you go through this, to look at it with the same attitude that this county has looked at things over the last few years, that we want to try and let people do what they can do with their land while we maintain safety for the citizens while they're doing it. And we've done that and been very successful with it. So what we don't want to do is have something in there that says we can't do something unless we can't do that. That there's safety built in there such as, you could do this, but you got to go get a special exception, or you could do this, but you have to do that in order to do this. We don't want to have things in there that just says you can't do that. Why? Well, because I don't like it and this has nothing to do with y'all at all. But we had a planning director many, many years ago when they were writing the comp plan and it came to the sign element in the comp plan. It might have been the LDC, but anyhow, it was the sign, the sign portion of it. And he put in there what type of billboards we could have in the county. And he wanted the ones with the big posts that went way up in there that you can't see and all that kind of stuff. And when we asked him, well, why did you decide that was the sign that needed to go in here? He said, well, I wrote around and those are the ones I thought looked the best. It ain't his decision. So I guess the point of that little story is, is try to, try to skin that cat in a way that doesn't tie the hands of future people around here to be able to get something done if they need to and it's a desirable thing that they want to be done.
Understood. Yes, sir. We, when proposing these changes, we're just following the statutory, these are just statutory required changes. Anything that's the local control, if we have done year compliance updates of other communities and the elected officials or from public comments and then elected officials at different workshops would come forward with potential local changes they wanted to make, but that was entirely from the elected official's perspective. The things that we are proposing, the text amendments or changes, is just to reflect the statutory requirements.
Got you. All right. Any other question? Perfect. Zach, go ahead.
So just as a conclusion, as Robert indicated, there's going to be quite a few more public hearings and you'll see these guys a little bit more. We're hoping to wrap this up by the October 24th transmittal deadline. So after that, you'll only get it one last time and that'll be our adoption. We'll work with, you know, the commission as we get through those steps. Also, as part of their research and completing this work for us, a survey is going to be going live on the county website. And it's basically, you know, very brief, you know, what is your affiliation with the county? Do you think anything needs to be changed? Do you see any issues with our current comprehensive plan? And that'll really help engage the citizens in the event that they're not able to attend these meetings. So I have the link ready. When that data goes in, it goes straight to Robert and his team. We'll be able to extract that data so that we can all see it too with our own eyes, but it'll be part of what they're doing. So I just wanted it to be on record that there's going to be a survey on the website for people to participate in this as well.
Good, thank you. All right, Brian?
That's it.
Guys, I'll see you all Thursday morning up in Jacksonville.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, now we're going to move to, we're going to start off a little backwards today, but we're going to move item K, St. John's Harbor Water Plant. So are we ready to have that?
Yeah.
Ready?
No, I printed that one.
JT, are you doing that one? Or JR?
Sorry, just logging in here.
While he's walking up.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
I realize that this is not a good situation. And that's putting it as mildly as I have that ability to do. I actually requested that this be moved up in the order because this absolutely needs to be discussed before our fee schedule needs to be discussed. Because I was trying to find it and I hadn't got to it, but on the water rates in the new fee schedule, and I couldn't find the page. But they basically, in the fee schedule, and I'm going to open up with this, in the fee schedule, it says that the new rates I think were going to be, were proposed to be changed to, I think it was 45, that we had already discussed previously. And they're paying 58 now, if my understanding is correct. Come on up, JT, and help me stay out of-
That's correct.
Trouble.
Yeah, so it was 40 for residential, commercial is 45. They're paying 58 for 6,000. We're doing 40 for 2,000.
Okay, does every commissioner know why we're here today about this? They know we're taking over this plant?
Go ahead and make a comment.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just so everybody's on the same page. September 1st, St. John's Harbor Water Association is turning over their water plant to the county. They can't run it anymore. They are, for lack of a better phrase, and I'll use their phrase, aging out. They're just, they're ready to be done with it. And so it's coming to us. And it does have a lot of upgrades that need to be done and work that needs to be done to come into DEP compliance.
And by state statute, we have to take it.
We have to take it.
That's correct.
Yes, no choice from-
No choice.
From my understanding, there's no choice here.
Okay, thank you.
We're just in a bad spot.
We're in a bad-
We are.
So I think Mr. Knowles, and I'm certainly not trying to throw Mr. Knowles under the bus, I appreciate his hard work and quick, but they sent us an email this afternoon that Mr. Stout forwarded on to us that this basically got a $860,769. And if that's the case, I think that we need to consider this is going to cost the taxpayers a million bucks. And there's not a whole lot we can do about it at this point, but the one thing we can do about it, I was talking to Ms. Young on Friday, and feel free to chime in here if I misquote you. The, I know you're not bashful, but she said she could track this in a separate line item fund or something to where it would carry forward to where we could track what it is. And so instead of dropping it from $58 down to $40, I think it needs to be $90 until, until such time at least, until they pay back the amount of money that the county's fixing to put in this thing. Because we have no, no option here, none whatsoever. So instead of dropping the rate to $40, I think we need to drop the consumption to 3,000 gallons and make it $90. And if it's a little less because you want them to pay out over a longer period of time, that's fine. But the county, the reality of this situation is the county's fixing to pony up some serious money here straight out of reserves because that's the only way that we've got to pay it. We certainly don't have it in our utility reserves. We don't have it anywhere else that I know of. So it's going to come straight out of general fund and it's just as, it's just as serious as somebody to walk in here with a gun to hold us up. We have no choice here. Unless, I mean, I guess you'd have more choice with that, you could get shot. But in, in this case, we just don't have a choice here. So I think that the, I think it leaves a sour taste in everybody's mouth. It certainly does mine, but it leaves a sour taste in my mouth that, that they've run this system for the last 20 years or whatever it's been, and there's three more years of fines on it. There's, there's payments of $10,000 a year. There's all this stuff that's going to accompany this turnover to us. I don't, I think the last thing we should be discussing is dropping the rate. We should drop their consumption down to 3,000, which is what most systems are around anyhow or less, and, and raise their rate. And I'll, I'll stop with there until it's time to say some more, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to stay consistent with our current rate structure, where the 2,000 gallon consumption rate in East Polacka, Commissioner Turner just mentioned 3,000. So that's going to be two different anomalies that our billing department has to run through. Is there a way to keep it consistent for our billing department whether one system shouldn't be on 2,000, the other one on 3,000, just to keep it fairly level for Ms. Carolyn, the staff at billing?
Hey, JT, and why don't you all come, I mean, JR, come up here and-
Why don't you all just sit right over, Mr. Reynolds usually.
Why don't you all sit up there, Mr. Reynolds?
I think his point is to manage this one separately purposely.
Yes.
So that it's on purpose. And I agree with that. So I don't think we should consider the other one. This needs to be managed as its own entity to try to recover costs. Because this isn't anything we did to get this. It's, it's something that happened. That's the nice way of putting it.
You have the floor.
So I agree with Mr. Turner 100% that it needs to be managed separately. Now, whether we do 2,000 and all of them, I don't care, but the amount shouldn't be the same because our system hopefully is managed better than the system we're inheriting and doesn't need all this stuff that this one needs, so.
I was just trying to simplify it for our staff when it comes to billing purposes, to keep it at the same consumption rate across the board. Just makes it, because they're very limited staff that they have in the billing department now, just trying to keep it consistent.
I understand.
Okay. Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. So there was a balance of the USDA loan. I think we're going to have to have that discussion as well in this conversation. But first, I want to ask the question.
Say that again.
A USDA loan, there's a USDA loan. So we're going to have to have that discussion as part of this overall discussion. But since we're talking about the rib, my first question would be, can we do away with the reverse osmosis system and not be required to upgrade the rib?
So I think one of the problems we're going to run into with doing away with the reverse osmosis system is the way that the grant and the loan was written. And that's, I'm getting that from previous conversations that I've had, because that's how the money was granted to us, was for an RO system. So I'm not sure-
Well, what if we paid the loan off, then we wouldn't have that? I mean, is that an option?
A bunch of it was a grant that they're not paying off. The loan was just a very small portion of the total amount of money that they got. That's a great question. But I mean, I think that that, that we still have to comply to the terms of the grant. Or, because I kind of asked something along those lines the other day.
It would be something to definitely look into. I mean, and we can do that kind of research. It's a good point.
I mean, I just feel like that if we don't, if it's not required and we can provide water without a reverse osmosis system, then I don't know. I mean, but I see what your point is. Your point is the grant that we had taken. All right, JR, thank you.
Just for consistency, I spoke with Ms. Wiley yesterday with the water quality that's there too. There is chlorides, or salt for better term, in that water there now. And it is, after the treatment, you're still seeing elevated chlorides, which means the RO system is not functioning the way the RO system should. So it's going to have to be rehabbed. It's going to have to have new filters put in the RO system. With that, it's, becomes a little dangerous to treat salt water and the chlorine as we would normally without the chlorides. Speaking to her, that she had just got some freshwater tests back. I would err on the caution of removing reverse osmosis. It's a great idea when we don't have salts, but with us having salts in that water, I think it becomes dangerous. I know, I mean, you spoke the other day about it, but I was just informed yesterday that they are seeing chlorides even in the treated side of the water, which tells me that the reverse osmosis system is going to have to have new, new filters put in it.
Okay. And then I know we got this, this estimate this afternoon. Does this include expanding the rib or is this simply cleaning the existing rib? Are we going to, I mean, what is, what is this 860 that's in this?
That's rehabbing the current existing rib that's there. That's the unfortunate part, is that thing's got to have a wastewater treatment facility similar to what we have in East Polacka. You know, we're using it as a drying bed for the industrial wastewater that comes off that plant. Even though it's just stripped down water, it's still considered an industrial waste. It's got to go through that rib system. Mr. Scott is much well-versed than I am, but I still think we're going to have problems trying to keep the water down in that particular pond. It's much like a drain field that's below the ground. Surface water's going to intrude in that. So I think we're going to have long-term problems and that there's another better way to treat it. I'd refer that to Mr. Knowles.
That, that estimate does include a bit of expansion for the rib.
Okay.
Since the way it was constructed, the pond is a little bit too low. The groundwater is high enough that it's keeping it from infiltrating. So to make it work, we'd have to bring the bottom of that pond up about two feet, which means we have to expand up the, both of the ponds because we need more surface area to infiltrate in. So there is some expansion in there, but it's not filling up the whole thing. It's not like building another rib. It's just making the ribs that are there work properly.
Okay, one other question. Once this, if we move forward and get this done, would there be room for, what's the capacity? Are we, what's our capacity left?
Good question.
The best we could tell by the numbers that we were given from them, they're running at about a 25% capacity. So it has 75% left to grow with what's currently there.
Okay, that's all my questions for now.
I have another one.
Mr. Turner?
If we, good question, good question. If we, if we, obviously, we have to take this over. And they're 25% capacity. If we were to get a grant or something, would we be able to expand beyond the limits of the grant, under the grant agreement and try to recoup some of the money and drop the fees by getting more customers on there and getting, you know, getting more people in the, in the pot to pay other than just the exact residents that are in there right now?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, when we spoke with, with St. John's Harbor, they're building a new school right across the street. And the school had actually asked if we paid for it, would you allow it to come across the street because they need it for fire protection? So I think there is room to grow outside of that utility boundary because I don't, there's not an established utility in the area other than this. So I don't know why we would have any issues with-
We need to look because I know that there's another utility that I was involved in in another county. And they, they basically got a grant from USDA ARD kind of like this with a co-pay like they did. But they couldn't extend past a certain area and a certain line. So if you lived 50 foot outside of that line, you were outside the boundary and you could not tie onto that system for a certain amount of time for, or whatever, because somebody I know ran into that.
Okay.
And so they had to drill a well and the water line was literally 50 feet from them.
Okay.
They had to drill a well.
So how do we determine that? I'm sorry.
Well, I'll, I'll get with Sam Sullivan and we'll look at different grants that are available, but we'll probably look at things that are similar to what we're already doing in the horse landing area with the water installation, getting paid and getting people off of the wells. I'm sure DEP would be interested in something like that.
We need to first find out, can we expand outside of the base, of the limits?
We're currently working with Rebecca USDA on transferring both the grant and the debt over. That question will be answered in those documents. We'll get that answer from Rebecca USDA.
And that might be the time to decide whether we pay it off or not. If we can, we need to expand and we can't, then-
I really-
Commissioner Pickett?
Oh, excuse me, go ahead. That's okay.
When you said you're in conversations with Rebecca, this is for the, the debt on this, this particular one? Because my questions are, and JT and I talked about this a little bit last Friday, was it was only at 25% capacity. So growing out of it needs, if we can get some grant money, definitely makes sense. But how much are we on the hook for now?
The total principal-
Total, fines, everything.
Well, fines, I can attest for you today because that's going to be a moving target. But the debt itself is about $140,000. The total grant between the state and USDA totaled about $1.7 million. That $1.7 million does not have to be repaid as long as we stay within the agreement that the grant was issued with the loan, right? Okay. And so we're getting all of those documents because both the grant that's already been received but is contingent upon operation and the debt will both be required by USDA to be transferred into Putnam County's name and obviously will be responsible for ensuring those metrics are met.
Wow, just not enough to take it over. You've got to assume the debt and everything too, so.
Yes, sir, because the debt is pledging revenues.
All right, okay.
Or you could, you could try to sell the utility if you could find someone to do it, to buy it, I mean.
I think it's going to be very difficult.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you were making a comment. Mr. Adams, Zach?
So when they turn it over to us, did we, what was the conversation? Did we say, like, it's going to be considerably more expensive for us to run it than you? I mean, because that's, that's the truth. I mean, if we, if we do it right, we really need them to pay us back.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I get it that they're aging out, but there has to be somebody in the community that could step up if, I mean, I, I don't know because I'm not, I don't live there, but it's going to cost them a lot more. I mean, that's the bottom line. That's, that's the risk they, they're taking by giving it to us. We can't tell all the rest of the citizens the, I mean, how many houses? It's only a couple hundred, even if that, is it?
I think it's 17, 168.
168.
I think is the total number of connections.
All right. I just, do they understand it's going to cost considerably more money if we run it than when they're running it?
Every meeting that we have had with the current leadership of St. John's Harbor has been made well aware that I don't believe that their rates are going to continue with the county operating it, that they would probably see what it's going to take to break even in this system. That has been told to them, I think, speaking with Commissioner Wilkinson, I think she, I think they actually sent a letter out to the residents that said that the county was going to take over the utility. And, I mean, at some point, yeah. But I mean, every, every conversation we have had with them, we have reiterated the fact that we are not going to be able to do this for the same rate structure it's currently in.
Right. Especially now that they've left it to deteriorate or whatever, so we're not in like a perfect state.
Yeah, I think they've-
One thing, if they turn over a plant that worked perfectly and had no issues, I mean, they have to fix it.
Yeah, I think their fine last year was $10,000 that they had to pay for DEP for the, the, being out of compliance with the, with the pond or the rib.
$9,000, I think they split it up into four payments. So I think it was actually $40,000 in fines and they are allowing them to pay a 10, 90, something hundred a year for four years, unless I misunderstood when I read it.
Mr. Turner, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I think that we need to seriously consider paying that loan off when appropriate, when the time's appropriate, the 140 or whatever it is. And we need to go ahead and just, because we don't, we do have a choice on that part of it, but we certainly don't have a choice on taking it over. So I'm not so sure that we don't need to seriously consider paying that off and keep from paying that additional $60,000 in interest or whatever it is or more. And plus having a payment scheduled all the way for the next 2,044, which is what I believe this, the payment, the current payment schedule goes out to. I don't think it's been determined yet, unless it has in the last few days, if they're going to continue under the same interest rate or not, or are they just going to transfer it to us? I think Ms. Young is actually talking to USDA ARD right now about what terms are they going to transfer it to us on, so.
That's correct. And the representative assigned to us said she hadn't done one of these in a very, very long time. She was actually going to have to go back to legal and get those answers for us. So we're still awaiting that information. It has to be transferred to us, but what that transfer looks like, it may cost us nothing or there may be some costs associated with transfer of ownership. I think the current annual rate of interest is 4.5% interest on that loan. The good news is, the day I spoke to her, their current interest rate was lower than that. So if we do have to transfer and we're going to continue the payment, your interest rate may go actually down.
Well, if it's low enough, it may behoove the county to do that, you know, when the, when the time is right. So how are we going to get, I mean, obviously, this is August the 13th. We don't have many days and we're going to be actually pumping water with the handle. So what do we, how do we get there from where we are? I mean, obviously, are they just planning on walking away on September 1st and saying, there it is, have at it?
So a few ladies that we've talked to that handle the billing are willing to, like, help us out on OPS system where the residents could come in there and pay instead of coming all the way to East Polacka. And that's something that we'll, we'll deal with. But then Ms. Wiley may be required to go out there. It's a one-hour-a-day plant, I think with one visit on the weekends.
Yeah.
Two visits on the weekends. So we may have to go out there, but there's another option on the table if we turn this plant over to twofold to run it for us like they do out in Aquila at another smaller plant. And that's going to run anywhere from $36,000 to $43,000, depending on what we do for sampling and testing.
Which would take most of the money that we're going to make, that we're going to generate out of the current, the current deal. Is the, obviously, they've got fines on the table, current fines. Is the plant operating right now to DEP standards?
Not with the ribs, no. They're not in complete-
So basically, do, does anybody know how much time we have before DEP kept, comes in like they did over at Buena Vista and got kind of hot about it? And, I mean, they got pretty testy with JR about, we were going to fix that whole thing for 30 grand and we didn't ask permission. And it's not, it's my fault as much as anybody because I was pushing to try to get it done for 30 grand instead of 430 grand. And I just missed the fact that we needed to go get a DEP permit and it upset DEP. And so they were going to make an example and show us that we weren't going to do what we were already doing somewhere else to rectify that problem just because we hadn't asked else to rectify that problem just because we hadn't asked permission before we did it. So nothing we could do about it. So I just want to make sure that we're not in a situation, right now DEP might be being a little bit flexible with them because they know they can't suck blood out of a rock. The county's got some blood. So if they start coming after us for all this money, you know, and all these fines and everything else, how much of a grace period do we have from this thing being shoved at us and actually, you know, having to start taking fines and problems with DEP? I mean, are they going to give us a few months to fix 20 years of screw ups?
Sure. I haven't had that conversation. I'm sure Mr. Knowles has a good relationship with DEP anytime that we've had something come up. I can't imagine us not getting a grace period, but I can't speak for DEP. Will we be asking for one? Yes.
I would certainly call them.
I'm just going to tell you, we're currently under a consent order. And what we have learned in consent orders is we better have a plan, what the plan is moving forward. And so they're going to want milestones and they're going to want deliverables inside that plan. So we can call and beg for forgiveness if we want, but we better be able to tell them that, hey, we're going to be out of this in 120 days, 180 days, whatever it's going to be, because they're going to want a deliverable. I mean, we learned that in East Palaca and things. And they've been, always been flexible with the timeframe, but we've just got to tell them, hey, we're going to have it fixed by X date. And the thing is, we just better have it fixed by X date because then the hammer is truly going to come down on us.
Well, my suggestion, strictly a suggestion, is that we try to face this the same way we're facing, currently facing the East Palaca system, is that we're doing everything in our power to make it sustainable. We are. We're adding customers, we're getting grants, we spent some of our ARPA money on it. We've done everything we can to try to, and we have a plan to where if it continues and doesn't get changed, the second meeting in November or soon thereafter, that it would, that it's going to be sustainable in the next reasonable amount of time. I'm not going to say two years or a year and a half because then if we don't make it, somebody's going to say something. But the plan is solid that JR and them are working on right now to get the East Palaca Water and Sewer System sustainable. I believe it is. And with that being said, we need to make sure this one becomes sustainable in some manner in the future, either by higher rates or grants or expansions or whatever. The, the one in East Palaca, they put it in many, many years ago, but they did it under, under the reasoning for economic development in the area. I have a hard time believing that having a expanded water system out there is going to greatly expand the economic development on-
West River Road.
On West River Road. And so it's a little bit different of an animal. If the school comes in there by it and the school will, I would imagine that they would pay to extend to them if the grant will allow us to go outside. They usually pay for infrastructure extensions in school construction. And so that may be a way to get it there. But even with the school, if they're using it for fire sprinklers and not for drinking water or what, I don't know what they'll use it for, then I don't know how much their consumption rate would be. So I don't know how much of a fee that would bring in up once we got it expanded to them. So I know that we're getting way in the weeds here, Mr. Chairman, but I felt like we needed to get a little bit in the grass at least because this thing's fixing to get very complicated very fast and we have no choice.
Well, I think we're going to provide a better water quality once that's up and running. Commissioner Adams, Zach, you've been very patient. Thank you.
I guess we talked about-
You got to turn your mic on.
I think we talked about everything.
Okay.
That I have.
JR, what do you need from us to proceed?
I think just some direction. The, this fee schedule as it's written doesn't take effect until October 1, even though we take over September 1. I think we got to run out through the rest of the year. And I don't, if we stay at their current rate, but I think we need to set a rate for October 1. Pending, I mean, I think it gives us a little bit of time to figure out if we can get, if, if it's eligible for a grant, what the USDA is going to do during the transfer process. I think a lot of those questions are still unanswered until we get all that stuff moved over. I just think we're going to have to have an expectation that they're going to have to go up to a certain amount. I think you're probably really accurate on your number to, to make it whole. But I think between now and then, I think we can reach out. I think that grant cycle is still open at DEP and see if there's, I know Scott, they opened it back up. Is it still currently open?
No, the, the grant cycle with DEP has closed. At the end of July, it closed. So they're in the process now of evaluating the grants.
Okay. We can, we can reach out to water management. We can reach out to DEP and see if there's any kind of funding out there eligible to try to fix this, this rib.
Okay. So the summary of highlights here, Twofold versus hiring another operator. That's really one thing we need to kind of give you direction on today. Rob?
Yes, sir. I mean, we spend an awful lot of money every year in both, in all of our utilities to offset the cost of, because Ms. Wiley, as much as anybody else deserves a day off, and every one of our plants are seven day a week operation. And that means we got to go out to St. John's Harbor on Saturday and Sunday and Christmas Day. And there is no break from those. So my thought process was is we really need to look at how much we spend in subcontractor services for each one of those plants and potentially add an operator in to run those plants on the days that she's off. Because even speaking to Ms. Wiley, we only have them to come in and run the plant. They don't repair anything when they're there. So then she walks into a plant on Monday morning that's got a chlorinator tube blew up, blown out and that there's not a, they're not take, we don't have them underneath a maintenance agreement. They're there only to, to satisfy the DEP permit. So I think we spend pretty close to the amount of money that it would cost to hire an operator and just subcontracting it out on a, on a regular basis.
And we could split that operator between multiple plants on the days that Ms., that she can't be there.
That is correct.
Where otherwise it would just be to pay for that one place.
That's correct. But we have them for the sewer plant, East Palaca Regional, Paradise Point. Now we're about to, had to do some kind of services for St. John's Harbor and every, and I think there's one more utility that I'm just not coming to the top of my mind. We have to pay them for operation at every single one of those.
Do they have to have the same amount of licenses?
Yes, sir.
So it would have to be somebody as, it couldn't be somebody that worked under her license or worked with her with training. It has to be somebody that's licensed to her level?
That is correct. You had to have, you had to have a licensed operator there. I think that one requires one hour a day. I think East Palaca's three hours a day, Ms. Kayla. And then Paradise Point is an hour. There's, there's a schedule for each one of them. And each one of them has a different level of license.
When we hire a consultant, they don't come out there personally. They send somebody on their behalf, don't they?
Yeah, but that person would have the same license. Whoever they send out would have the license.
Okay. Makes sense. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Adams.
I think we got to the answer there too, so.
Okay, good. Ms. Wilkinson?
So just so I understand, when we say, Commissioner Turner, to your point, your proposal of $90, so that would be a minimum fee? Is that what you're saying? Everybody at least would have to pay $90 a month?
$90 a month minimum and 3,000 gallons consumption instead of six.
Okay. So 2,000 is what, whatever they're saying.
For $90, three.
Okay.
Okay. So I-
The request was to try to make it uniform in our consumption. So would you allow us to adjust the rate to assume a 2,000 gallon consumption?
I don't understand the problem with figuring, I'm just not understanding at all. Sorry.
Because you're going to have two different billing rates in a very antiquated computer system.
I got you.
And I think it becomes difficult for Ms. Carroll to differentiate on billing cycles, whether it's coming out of St. John's Harbor, whether it's coming out of the East Palaca Regional system.
I mean, it's-
So I think base rate is easily established. It's whenever consumption comes into play. And then what we got to do is, is the board has determined, I think it was 8.25 per thousand following the original consumption. If I'm not mistaken, that was the number. It was either eight or 8.25.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty per thousand. So we need to establish what that's going to be per thousand over and-
So you're saying do 2,000 at 81.50 instead of 3,000 at 90, basically?
That would work. And then charge, then charge the same consumption rate of the 8.50 per thousand gallons over the 2,000.
That's, that's a little bit better. I mean, obviously this is my district and I've ridden in that neighborhood several times and there's a very mixed use of houses. There have some high-end houses, some high-end mobile homes, and then you also have some people that you can tell that are barely getting by. I mean, when you ride by their yard, you're thinking, you know, there, it could be a struggle. And so I don't want to put it necessarily, I know that it's, that this is a hard decision that we have to make. But it's hard because obviously we don't want our kids having to pay for somebody else's water. I get that. But at the same time, to jump something up so quick for them could, could really be hurtful to them. So I just want to caution us on that. I'm better with the 81.50 than I think I would be the $90. What does that give us? Does that give us, how much, so when we took over this or when we're, we're giving this, obviously they felt like they were self-sustaining although they were band-aiding a lot of equipment. But they were, when the conversations that we had with them, the money that they were taking in was covering their bills.
No.
And so that's what I want the clarity on from staff. Is that, is that the case, Julian, when you looked at the numbers?
No, ma'am. It is not my opinion that they're self-sustaining. I have requested a number of different financial reports that haven't been, they haven't been able to get to me yet. Again, most of what they have operating is volunteer labor. But remember, we can't assume self-sustaining by deferring maintenance and deferring the costs-
Oh, yeah, I agree.
-that are there. And if you are, then you're not, and, and you're theoretically breaking even, then you're not truly breaking even, right? And so many, many of the costs have either been deferred or they've negotiated some sort of partnership agreement where they aren't paying what we are going to have to pay to make that plant self-sustaining. So I, I do not believe, or I do not agree that they are currently breaking even at their current rate.
Okay. So if we were at this 81.50 for consumption for 2,000 gallon, what does that, what, where does that put us financially? Does that get us back to a certain?
Unfortunately, I think it's too early to answer that question.
Okay.
Because there's just so many things that are unknown. But the things that we do know is I think we're going to put upwards of a million dollars in there to keep DEP off of us. And I don't, I don't think that includes them RO filters and they're not 50 bucks.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there are tens of thousands at the very least for new RO filters that probably haven't been changed out quite some time. And so on top of the projections that Mr. Knowles made, I think we're going to have other things besides that. And I don't know that they've actually been out there or had, had our water lady, Marie, is it?
Kayla.
Kayla.
I'm very sorry. But I don't know they've had her out there on site yet to where we've had our professional to be able to go through it to the level that she doesn't know that we're not going to need a chlorinator addition or we're not going to need some other addition. I mean, I think you've been there, haven't you?
Yes, sir. I, I have been on site and there will be other work that needs to be done in addition.
My point, exactly. I, I think that we're just hitting the tip of the iceberg here. And I don't want anybody to think that I don't have feelings for the people that are having a hard time in there. That's just not the case at all. But in, I don't think that myself living on East End Road should take over their water system and my expenses should go up $20 a month where their expense won't go up to at least a level that's somewhere down the road sustaining.
Yeah.
Because it's not. At 81.50, it's going to be years, years, 168 customers before they even come close to paying the interest on what we could have gotten, of what Mr. Reynolds gets us on our money that we have in, in investments right now off the million dollars that's going in there. So, you know, the, the 81.50 we dropped in, I'm, I'm good with that if you are, but it definitely needs to go up to somewhere in that neighborhood. And I truly believe that next year, whenever, if y'all do, if y'all are fiduciarily responsible with that system, that next year it's going to go up to 110, 20. I do honestly believe that. So, and I still don't think you're going to be sustainable at that amount of money and have some money to start paying back the cost of the original system.
Right.
That's why you're not going to find anybody to take this thing over.
Oh, right. No, you're, you're absolutely right.
Because it just doesn't make financial sense at all to own this plant, which is why it got shoved at the county.
It's definitely an ugly baby.
Mr. Pickens?
We're going to make it pretty then. I was going to call it a pig in a poke, but yeah, this is just a rock and a hard place here. I, I do agree with, you got to raise the, the rent or the fees. And, and I don't have a problem with lowering the gallons. I, I do have respect for everybody's district is that, you know, you're going to be answering most of the questions of why? Will there be letters sent out with the, with the next bills when we decide exactly what the rate's going to be and why?
We, we, we can. We didn't to the, to the people in East Palaca. But I mean, we can also do that one. We didn't send out, I mean, we don't usually send out rate increases to the, I mean, but, I mean, if that's the direction of the board, we can absolutely do it. But we haven't to our customers that we're going to raise the rates on East Palaca in October.
We didn't raise them as substantially though as what we're going to raise these if we end up going to 82 or-
Right. That's what, that's what I was going to say. So that, that probably needs to be, that needs to be looked at.
I, I apologize. Mr. Stout did send a letter. I'm, I'm-
Yeah, we did inform East Palaca residents that the water rate was increasing. And we left it open until that everything was finalized with this meeting.
Yeah, because I've got a couple emails about it.
Yeah, they were made aware that the rates were going up.
Yep.
Okay.
And it also specified that it would be going up with a 3% increase each year after this year, minimal.
All right. Say that again?
On the letter, 3%, as discussed in our last meeting, we did say that when we said, that the board said $40 on residential, 45 on commercial. And then it was also discussed 3% afterwards at a minimum increase every year.
Not a maximum CPI, was it? Minimum of 3% maximum CPI.
Hey, Mr. Adams.
Right. And that needs to be probably somewhere in this one too, but may not because we may have to make bigger adjustments.
Yeah, I think you should.
One more, one more question, Julian.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I understand, I don't agree with it, but I understand we have to take this back. So if, ands or buts, right? So we got to fix it. Okay? It becomes our responsibility. I can maybe see the grant or the loans. I can't see the fines. I just cannot see that. Is that, is there any way to negotiate with them, right, that we've got a plan, we're going to take it over, we've got a plan, this is what we're doing, ask them to do away with any fines that have been incurred that we would have to pay? Because that's just not right.
We are, we have begun negotiations with DEP. Scott can tell you more about that. Their, DEP, it is up to DEP's discretion as to whether or not they table those fines to be imposed at a later date, given us an additional performance period with the operation changing from St. John's Water Harbor Association to the county. That is something that will be at DEP's discretion. But it would aid us in that conversation if we had a tangible milestone plan that we could demonstrate to them that at the point the county took it over, we immediately began to work towards the consent items that are there. That consent item has a number of metrics already laid out and milestones that are, that some have, some have passed and some are approaching. But St. John's Water Harbor Association has not been able to meet those compliance metrics. We know what they are. So if we were able to go back to DEP and say, hey, if you'll hold, if you'll help us, we would appreciate it. Here's what the board has approved staff to go and do and the milestones and timeline for which we would be able to bring that plant back into compliance. At the end of the day, we're going to get into compliance one way or the other, right? Either working with DEP hand in hand or DEP's going to force our hand. So it's obviously beneficial for everyone involved at this point that we try to, to make it as palatable as possible.
Okay. Mr. Adams, Zach, I promised you and I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. So they obviously don't have any reserves of any kind of substantial?
To be determined. I've asked for the bank accounts. They do say they have multiple bank accounts. The only reserve account required by the grant is to require 10% of an annual payment of the loan, which is not very much. However, I do not have the bank account information at this time.
What is the loan payment? Do we, if we kept it?
It's $906 a month.
Six bucks. That's not too bad.
But then you're paying interest on that.
So that's like $8 a month per household, something like that. What about, if we did a letter, I mean, I like the idea of us doing a letter letting them know. But I think that letter in this case needs to explain what we're doing with the increase. We're getting the stuff that's listed, that's $800,000. You know, we need to say, this is what we're doing. This is why we have to do this because we have to get you in compliance because your water doesn't meet the requirements set out by DEP. We have no choice but to come into compliance. We're not going to, you know, we're going to share the majority of the load because obviously we are and try to recoup that. But I think it needs to say something about all of that, to, to have some justification more than just, your rate's increasing because of inflation, because that's not the case here. Your rate's increasing because you guys kind of mismanaged it and we have to fix it. We have no choice.
I agree.
I don't know how you word that, but-
I agree with that. Thank you.
Right. So if we do that, I think we need to do that.
He wants you to turn on your microphone.
And on the letter, we can make sure that we do a bulleted list on, you know, we have to redo the ribs. There need to be updates with the RO system at the plant. There, anything that we can list, we'll put on there as to why the rate's going up. anything that we can list, we'll put on there as to why the rate's going up.
And, and say that this doesn't even cover everything because it's not going to be close.
Yep.
And you're going to say that this is not what Putnam County desired to do. This is what you did.
Correct.
Put on us.
Because we have to accept this.
The Water Association, right.
I get it. Mr. Turner.
But they're not just putting it on us. They're putting, that's what they do to everybody. I don't think they're mistreating us or leasing. Not like they did a fair being of this. They laid it to us because they were mad ass. But anyhow. Scott, is the, the pond that the, that the ribs are in, I'm assuming they're in the pond?
Yes, sir.
Is that a retention pond or is it like a, supposed to be a dry bed pond that you clean out every now and then like the sewer plant in East Palaca is?
Basically the same thing as what we have at the Gilbert plant. They're, most of the time they're supposed to be dry except for when the water is going in to infiltrate in. The problem is the, the ribs that were built at St. John's Harbor were built, constructed at the observed water table.
That's been retained over the years. We can't just put dirt in there and raise the beds up and leave that in there. We have to actually clean the pond.
Yes, sir. We, we would have to remove what sediment's been built up in there and then we need to raise the bottom of the ponds so that they will actually infiltrate.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could raise it without, without digging it out.
No, I think the, the buildup of the sediment in there with everything that's, they had a, a large number of suspended solids that are going in there. I'm pretty sure that those voids are, are well filled up and what infiltration that did exist no longer exists in those ponds.
Okay, so they don't have a spray field. They actually used the seepage out of the pond to, to dissipate their affluent.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think Ms. Wiley has some information that may answer some of your questions.
I have spoken to DEP about the consent order. The easiest way to explain it is the consent order lives with the facility, not the ownership of the facility. So whatever was put in place at St. John's Harbor, we automatically get. We don't have a choice in it. I have spoke to the representative. I've had a conference call with him and they would be more than satisfied with just any forward movement. Since St. John's Harbor was hit with the consent order, all they did was pay the fine. That was it.
For years.
Absolutely nothing else. So if we make just the action plan, which is the number one step on the consent order, they will be tickled pink. So they will be easy, easily made happy as long as we move forward. But I did tell them that I am not touching the consent order until we have ownership. So they will, it will sit there until September one. That is not my facility. It's not the county's facility. So until keys have exchanged hands, that consent order is not ours.
I think that's just smart.
I have a question before I call on Mr. Turner. What do we do with the water, why, before, while we're repairing the ribs? The discharge?
Well, since we have two ribs there, there is a way to, to rejuvenate one while we were using the other one. So I think we could infiltrate the water that's going in there, still operate the plant and use one rib to pump into, one rib to treat while we're rejuvenating it.
Okay.
So, and that's something we'd have to work with DEP about. They would understand that there's going to be a construction period where it may not be completely in compliance, but we're getting it as close to compliant as possible while we're in the middle of construction without taking the plant down.
And some of the work that needs to be done out there, we'll probably expand the surface area of the ponds before we start de-watering because we're going to need more area to put the water to do any kind of work anyway.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that we've, this has been great conversation that we've had today. I'm going to need to know how we get from here to Daytona. I mean, excuse that analogy, but how do we move forward? And I don't mean us just willy nilly talking about different aspects that we might need to do in DEP and the different things. And I realize that a lot of it we do not know yet and that's why we're having to do that. So personally, and this is just me, I'd like to know what we need to do today because we have no choice here and it's not going to hold us up or get us in deeper water with DEP or whatever. And then work with Wiley and find out what we need to do. Wiley, right?
Yeah, that's who I said, yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. I thought she was telling me no, that ain't her name. What they just told me.
I thought it'd be the water lady.
They would do that to me though, Wiley. I'm telling you right now, they'd give me the wrong name just to hear me say it. But anyhow, I'd like to have a plan of how we get from now until the, the next meeting. And then I'd like to have a plan at the next meeting. And I'd like to have the chairman, I'd like to request that the chairman, if we get in a tight here and we need further planning, that he calls a special meeting on this in between. Because the last thing we want to do is show up here on September first, which is what, three weeks or something? Show up on September first.
With no plan.
And we're not ready.
Plan, yeah.
Yep.
So I, I think this is going to take a little more effort from here until September, probably on this board. Now, I know if this was in East Palaca, I'd go work with the guys like y'all gave me the authority and all that, but this is not going to be a deal where one commissioner can go out there and get involved and you have a long-term plan that you come up with. The time isn't available for this one, so I think we're going to have to do it just like we are. What do you need today? What do you need today to get us through two more weeks where we're not behind? JR, JT, what do you, what do you need today?
I, I, I mean, we're going to have to move it forward. I mean, so I mean, I think right now we need to have the conversations with DEP and see how far along we can actually move the needle. You know, it's, it's just a written plan for them, good. And then Mr. Knowles has some opportunity to get some real true hard cost numbers together. And then we got some decisions to make once we got some true hard costs because right now we're still in the inception phase of taking this plant. I mean, there's still just so many unknowns. I mean, can we take over the operation of it? Yep. Is it still going to be out of compliance day one when we get it? Yes, sir. But I mean, we got to get, we will work with DEP to get a plan to get it out of purgatory for no better term.
A li, just a little bit outside the box.
Yep.
A little bit. How much would it cost or would it even be feasible, feasible for us to run a line from the East Palaca Water Plant under the river and tie that on? Because if it's two million dollars and we don't have a whole nother plant we've got to deal with anymore, that might be a thing because we got plenty of capacity in East Palaca to take care of this area. And we know for a fact that, that if ever, it'll be many, many, many years before they just pay back the amount of money that it's going to cost to make that one on, on the river road work. So it could be that in the long run, it's kind of like Buena Vista. You know, we got a grant, ran, but in the long run, it was cheaper to do that. Especially, I know we can't tie onto the pipe if it goes under the river, but we could tie on to it down to the river. And then on the other side, we could tie on to it and that would also give us, if we ran a large enough pipe, it would give us capacity possibly on the other side of the river that we could expand the system to try to help the system. We're trying to get sustainable on the other side of the river to work. Just thinking outside the box. May not be possible whatsoever.
All that stuff is absolutely possible. I mean, we've talked, I mean, I mean, at the end of the day, the city water is right there across the Rice Creek too, right, at, at the Bargeport. And we're already paying for that, you know, so I mean, we, I think there's a lot of options that are out there on the table.
Well, the problem with the city water is, is they charge us more for the water we get at Bargeport than what we're able to charge the citizens out there who use that water or very close to it.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, it may be that, that's certainly an option. And then don't misunderstand me. That's certainly an option that needs to be explored along with the others. But I'm not so sure it wouldn't benefit us in the long run as much as if we could get water in that area.
And I just asked Ms. Wiley, just, just another outside the box question was, can we put a frac tank there and take the industrial waste and haul it to our wastewater treatment plant in East Palaca and not deal with the rib? And her answer was, you, you very well may be able to. So.
Yeah.
So I mean, that may save you a million dollars, right? I know because Mr. Tiltin's in the process now trying to get.
The same way we do the leachate, basically what we're talking about doing with the leachate.
Correct. I, I don't know if it's possible, but I mean, we'll have all those conversations to see if that's even, even possible to take. She's saying we'll get a seventy out of every hundred gallon return. So for every hundred gallons we use, we got thirty gallons of waste. We may be able to put a couple, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand gallons of water out there and then just at, once or twice a week haul it to the wastewater plant, then we're not dealing with a rib. Right? Which has got us out of compliance. So I think there's other options.
So today, all you need to do is have this conversation. Let us know.
Yes, sir.
We'll talk about the rates when we get to the fee schedule of the eighty one fifty or ninety or whatever we end up doing. So, and the, you know, we'll do that when we get to the rate schedule.
Yep.
But today, do you have all the information you need from this board today?
Right, so, go ahead, go ahead.
So the only other question I'm going to have for you is we've created a, a separated fund for this plant. Obviously, September expenses are going to hit the county prior to the new fiscal year. We're going to have to move funding from the general fund over into those expense lines in order to operate. We're going to be at best estimating what that's going to look like. So, and, and when we, the, and then the other caveat is when we talk about that fee structure, remember the fee structure on the agenda today goes into effect October one. We need to talk about two separate items where this is applied. One is we would have to modify or amend this year's fee structure in order to assess a September one rate. And then next year's fee structure is what is actually on the board. So both that budget amendment, which likely is going to require a 505 because you're going to be moving money from the general fund and into a brand new fund.
I don't want to minimize the deal here. I really don't. But I don't know that we're not trying to do a lot of extra work for thirty five hundred dollars, extra money for the month of September. I mean, I just don't know here. And so it, you know, and I don't, I know I didn't do the math right, but it, I'm not that far off. So by the time we send out an extra letter telling them their dues are going up in September instead of October first, and we do go through those motions, we, I, this commissioner understands that we're going to have to pony up some money between now and September first, at least to get us into the new budget year. The pretty part about this is, is that at five oh five this afternoon, we got six point two million dollars in reserves that came over from last year into this year up to this point that haven't been budgeted for anything that could be spent on capital projects. This is why you have reserves. When you run into a situation and get shoved down your throat and you've got to fix it. We have the money to fix this right now. So I'm not so sure that we don't need to, to, you, you're going to have to tell me how to handle it. But I'm not so sure that we don't need to go on and take a million dollars of that and true it up this afternoon at five oh five and put it into that new water fund to get us in, to get us into that fund. In other words, we haven't changed a bit of what we're going to do at five oh five, except we took a million dollars out of that and put it into the new line item fund. No, you can't do that.
Can't. But, but you and I are on the same page. That's what I'm trying to ascertain from the board. How much money do you want to start this fund out with? And you can't because a budget amendment, changing fund appropriation is required by statute to be advertised in the paper showing where it's coming from and where it's going to. We did not have that information in order to advertise it moving into this brand new fund at that time. So we can't do it at five oh five today. However, that is exactly what I'm asking you. Do you want to start with a half a million? Do you want to start with a million? What, what are we wanting to start with?
I reasonably feel personally, I reasonably feel that if we get out of this for a million dollars, we're going to be lucky, lucky, lucky. Because I think it's going to cost more than that. I think by the time we re-rate, we redo the ribs and redo the pond and get this thing running and change the RO filters and do all the things and get in compliance with DOT. And if there's any money left, see if we can prepay some of that other. But I don't believe there's going to be any money left. And so I'm not so sure that between now and the end of October, we won't be paying off the loan once you figure out that might be in our best interest to keep from paying that additional money that's never going to be paid back in any of our lifetimes, not at the rates we're charging one hundred and sixty eight people. And you can't charge them four hundred bucks a month. I mean, that's just ridiculous. But that's what it would take to make this work is, you know, three or four hundred dollars a month per household for one hundred and sixty eight houses. And we can't do that. So around this eighty to ninety dollars that we're talking is about the most we can do at least this time around.
So, so is there board consensus on a dollar amount?
For the fee schedule or for?
No, no, she's talking about for the amount. The only thing I wanted to add to that, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Is that I think we probably should put enough in there to cover that loan too, in case we decide to pay off that loan. So maybe like one point two million.
Well, they could always switch it over.
Yeah.
Yeah. But a million dollars when we don't even know what it is yet, we just have a really.
Well, we were looking at the, the eight hundred some thousand for the first part. She's saying stuff's already broken, so I agree with you. Right, right.
Quick estimate done by our engineer.
Right, right. And then she's saying there's.
Really trust what he tells me. I truly do. But it's still just a first quick estimate.
Right. That's why I'm saying maybe we want to put like one point two in there.
Commissioner Walker.
She's saying other stuff is broken, just from a cursory look. She's not even saying she like invested aggressively. She's saying this is obviously jacked up.
I'm, I'm at the million dollars with Commissioner Turner because we know we've got eight sixty and, and a one forty, so that puts us at a million and, and we will have some income coming in. Also expenses going out, but I, I'm, I'm good with putting the million dollars in at the next meeting. I think that, that's, that's prudent.
Good thing is, is this son of a gun ain't recurring. I mean, so we're not putting a million dollars in and it's going to become recurring expense from now.
Let's hope not anyway.
Yeah, until the, until, let's remember, as soon as we take this over though, we're going to have people coming in here with water samples six months from now saying my water's brown and all this other crap that we had from the other one. So that's the facts of the matter. Once we own it, they're not going to be like, well, hey, it's my neighbor. They're going to be like, hey, it's these five people up here that we elected. Brown water, guys, coming out of my hose tap. I mean, that's, that's, that's what's going to happen.
You're not wrong.
Mr. Stout, we're going to bring this in for a landing.
Yep. So I know that some of the repairs need to happen with the trains at the RO plant. I was going to ask Kayla a question. How comparable in size are the trains at the RO plant at St. John's versus what we got at East Palaca?
Length and width, they're similar. There's just a whole lot less at St. John's Harbor, like a fourth, maybe?
A fourth, okay. So what, what's, what would be your estimated cost on replacing those trains?
That's what we just asked. We got a budgetary estimate because we have one in East Palaca that needs to be done.
Right, that's why I was asking.
We capitalized budgeted that. And then the original estimate we got for that was seventy thousand to do, to do the, to redo the trains. So I mean, I'm, I guarantee you, you're at thirty five, thirty, thirty five thousand.
Probably looking at thirty.
The RO train there.
I still think.
There's better water though.
I still think we need to just bite the bullet and put in a million because that, we, this is one of those situations that it's much better to have a little extra money at the end of the year than be a million or to be a hundred thousand short. You know, or sixty thousand short. And then the next commission's got to deal with it again next year. I'd rather personally put the million in, hope, and hope that through the negotiations with staff and DEP and through the negotiations with Scott and DEP that we may can get there with this million dollars by negotiating the things that we need to do. I don't know for a fact, but it could be that, and, and I'm a roofer, so Scott knows that. But, so when I say things like this, take it in stride. Might be that he could do half the rib system this year and get by with the other half for another year. I don't know. I don't know the answers to them. But those are the kind of questions that I'm sure he'll ask when he goes through this process. So anyhow.
Right. Commissioner Walker?
I just have a quick question. Kayla, have you inspected the meters? Are we looking at some kind of a meter replacement? I, I know we, you know, this is getting in the weeds, but it does also affect our bottom line.
So the meters they currently have, you're talking per house, right?
Yes, ma'am.
They are older. They are, you have to hand read them, like someone is going out and reading one hundred and sixty eight meters every single month.
And so have we accounted for that in staff time? I mean, is that part of what the?
So when we, when we met with the folks from St. John's Harbor, I hate to say this on the air. The guy actually goes in there and reads the meters every month for a hundred bucks.
He does. I, I remember that conversation.
And I think he's still willing to continue on reading those meters for a hundred dollars. I don't know. We have a way to do that for the county with our minimum wage, but if he will go up there as an OPS employee and read the meters in St. John's Harbor, he knows where they all are. He knows what it is. I think he's a perfect fit for somebody that can go out there that understands the system.
To be fair, he's gonna be an independent contractor.
We'll probably require him to have two million dollars in insurance and.
No, 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 he will not be OPS. He would be classified as an independent contractor, um, as sole proprietor, if he would like to engage in that services for a hundred dollars. The only other comment I would make to that is, every other meter in the county is read by RF currently, so it's plugging in a machine and populating, where this would be Ms. Carroll and Hannah hand typing in all six, a hundred and sixty-eight meters every month.
Okay, so, um, how much does a meter cost roughly? Do we know?
So, the, the ones we purchased for East Palaca for the ARPA were around four hundred dollars apiece. Just the cost of the meter, that's not installed, that's just getting the meter there with the RF head.
Box and all, or just the guts?
That's just, that's just the meter, and the RF head was about four hundred dollars apiece.
And then pass the meter box is the responsibility of the owner?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that would still hold true. So, I, I'm, I'm thinking during our math, as we're doing this math equation, we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah, like I said, one point two million.
I think we're getting there, Mr. Adams.
Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, as we're talking about this, um, Scott or JT, with this plant operating at twenty-five percent, with how many ribs? Can you go to a hundred percent with the same amount of ribs, or you have to add ribs down the road?
Um, that all depends on if we replace the, repair the ribs to the point that they're infiltrating properly. Uh, they're constrained to their operating capacity right now, because they can't infiltrate in the water fast enough, uh, from the, from the spoil.
That's an engineer's answer for maybe.
But the ribs that were, if they were constructed correctly, then they would be able to infiltrate at the capacity, and we wouldn't have this issue now.
So, you would be able to, when, in the rebuilding process, it would take care of it, so if.
We should be able to operate at capacity.
If we decide, if, if a future board decides to expand this, if we, we go with the system we got, expand it, you won't have to add any more.
Correct.
New ribs.
We're gonna, but in the plan that Scott's got, once we get a, a true scope of work and a design, the surface area of those ponds will be expanded, instead of just two acres, we're gonna have to make those a little bit bigger, because we're gonna have to raise the bottom of those beds, so we need more surface area.
Okay, and with the million dollars, I think that's, that's fair. I mean, if we get out of it for that, then.
They can always add more in.
We can add more.
If they need to. The reserves aren't gonna go away, October first, they're gonna roll over again. We haven't had time to spend them.
Need a motion, or wave of support?
Can I come back to your agenda five oh five on the next meeting? I just think that we've sent some sort of nobody's thoughts when it happens.
No, I think we should. We got, we have to, you know, the choice, so, twenty-third at five oh five.
Twenty-seventh at five oh five.
Twenty-seventh. And we're looking at putting one million or one point two million in?
I, I, the one point two, the other thing, too, is when you write that letter to the people, you can say, listen, we, we believe it's gonna be around one point two to one point three million, and this is why it's going to ninety dollars. Um, I don't know, I just, I would, or eighty, one fifty, whatever we decided.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Are we gonna, I talked to you about this the other day, Julianne, are we gonna capture this as a loan to this, so one day we can try to get the taxpayer money back, if we can?
So, I've worked with finance to establish the ability to, at that point, it becomes at board's direction for you guys to tell me whether or not you want this established as an inter-fund loan.
Yes.
Um, which will appear as a liability receivable, and if so, what your terms are. Do you want it payable in five years, in ten years, in fifteen? And I'm gonna give you a very basic analogy, please don't take offense to it, but it is much like loaning your child bunny, right? If, if your five comes around and you aren't able to, or can't, or don't want to at that time collect from them. You can renegotiate that, uh, long-term liability, but I will have to capture the, the intent of the board in what I send, so if you can give me some direction on what your terms are.
I want it to be a loan, and I want it to be for a longer period, so, but one day, if we can capture that money back for the taxpayers, we should try to do that.
With no penalty for prepayment at whatever rate that the USDA is gonna charge us.
There's no penalty period, and, and interest isn't the issue, it's, you, when you tell me longer term, are you talking thirty years, fifty years, or are you talking ten years, twenty years?
Twenty, twenty, probably.
Okay. Consensus is twenty years, inter-fund loan from the general fund to the, what is now, uh, the four nine fund.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Um, if we were able to get a grant in the future, whether it be through USDA or a state appropriation or something, could we ask for that? I mean, we're, if we have to do it before we get the grant, we can't ask for reimbursement, is that right? You have to get the grant first and then put it, okay?
Correct.
I thought that, I just needed to ask the question.
You would not be able to use the grant to repay the loan either.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying, okay?
If we loan ourselves the money, do we require a monthly payment back, or are we just saying that it's a loan due in a lump sum in twenty years?
That's correct. It's a zero percent interest, there's no monthly payments or annual payments required, but in twenty years, um, it would become due on the receivables note, right? That being said, if in ten years we hit oil out there and we suddenly can pay it back, then we could pay it back in ten years with no penalties.
Or even less than. Can't happen, but I've never heard of a grant to let us reimburse a current loan, I've never heard of that. We tried and tried and tried on other loans and never could get it done, so, but they might get a grant in the future that lets you expand the system, and then the money from that could go back to pay the loan, so that you really get money out of it, income from it, but it comes back into the system to, to repay the, could repay the loan. So, let's say, for instance, we got, and I'm just pulling this right out of my ear, but let's say that, uh, the Corps of Engineers on some of this thirty million dollars that they're talking about possibly giving us, um, five million in East Palaca, let's say they talk to them about maybe going out and running water to all of the, uh, Palmetto Bluff Road and down East River Road to, to run a loop in there, and this plant had enough capacity to make that work. If that's the case, then we could take that grant and run that, and then keep all the income from all the people that live up and down those two roads, bringing it back into this plant to help them be more sustainable. And if it, if their income outweighed their expenses, and they had money left over, and they have a loan, a loan coming at them, if they made a hundred grand one year, fine, pay, pay a hundred grand of that loan back that's coming in the future.
I appreciate you explaining that, because this is all new territory for me, so thank you.
Let me kinda set the why I said a loan. Years ago, when I came in, um, everybody knows the landfill was up for sale, and supposedly the sale money was gonna go back to the general fund, but it couldn't go back to the general fund unless you could prove expenses against that money. You just can't sell it and stick it back in there. So, the enterprise fund, which this would be, is allowable to come back and pay the taxpayers of the county back for actual expenses that it incurred, and we had that problem with the landfill, thinking they could put the money back in general fund, they couldn't have done that. They just couldn't have done that. So, this way, by setting up a loan, at least there might be a possibility for our taxpayers to be paid back into the future. Yes, sir.
I sure don't wanna muddy the waters, and I do apologize.
If you do, I'm gonna get a ruler.
And I'm, and I'm gonna put disclaimer out front, that I'm not a math star, okay?
But you're not, what?
A mathematician, but I did verify my math with Ms. Julianne sitting beside me, that if we looked at it like you guys have spoke about as a loan, right, and a million dollars at zero percent, that's thirty-three thousand dollars a year payback over the next thirty years for this thing, and you give us some kind of thirty, forty thousand dollar years in operational cost for that plant, that's paying back seventy thousand dollars a year with just the base rate alone of what Commissioner Turner said earlier, if they did not use one gallon in consumption, those hundred and sixty-four people would pay one hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars. I don't think we have to hit them that hard. If we're willing to take it back as a loan and pay the loan back, I think we don't have to hit the, the people as hard there. I'm just, I think there's a math equation in between it, if we're gonna truly pay that back, we, and, and the utility is not expected to pay a hundred percent of that upfront. I just, just wanted to throw that out there, is once you start really doing the, you know, start breaking this down into math, it, it may be a little bit easier lift on the citizen. I, I'm just looking out for them, and that's all I'm trying to do, I was not trying to make water.
I understand that, but your math is thirty years.
But we're giving them a, we're giving them a low, a no-interest loan. They wouldn't get that on the outside world, so we're giving them a no-interest loan. If you added the interest on it over the years, then it would take up the difference in our, in our, in our monies that we're, that we're talking right here. You know, the thing about it is, it can always be adjusted down. If y'all come back next year to the commission and you say, hey, we did really good this year, they actually made thirty thousand dollars this year in their fund that's defunct at the moment. If you ask me, it's just defunct. If you're a million dollars in the hole, that makes you worse than defunct. So, if they come back next year and say, hey, they did good, they made thirty thousand, if the board at that time wants to drop it down to thirty thousand instead of getting the money paid back to the citizens, that's their decision. But I think we need to move this forward like we would any other business deal anywhere. This is business here.
Yes, sir.
It was shoved at us, but it is business.
Mr. Adams, that, you had a comment?
Yeah, and because we're not paying it back early either, remember that, so you're not necessarily holding them to give the thirty thousand to the general fund next year, that would be up to the commission next year. Um, so, I don't think you can think like that, just because of that, but I also think that's also why we don't need to have it be such a long-term loan either, because just like what Julianne said, in ten years, we can be like, ah, it's gonna be a twenty-year loan, it's, 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 so I, I don't know that we need to do thirty years, 'cause it's not like we're providing terms for payback either.
They can always extend it ten more years.
Right, so I mean, I think a ten year is more than ample, given the fact that we're not actually saying, like it suggested.
Well, that's twice in one day I agreed with him.
I think perception is reality, and I think people are gonna take a hit anyway. They're fixing a really good and eye-opening experience out there, so. Hey, guys, we gotta move on, so, um, are we in agreement? Do we need to start looking at hiring another operator? That was.
Why don't we put, because we're, if we're meeting in the next, in the very next meeting, and we're gonna put a package together that I think that gives us a really accurate number down to what it's gonna take to operate both, both facilities, and we'll bring you all that number, and that, then we'll be able to decide.
I think we need to jump the boat on that one. I think we need to go on and start looking for that person, because we are gonna get this plant, Wiley's already working seven days a week most of the time.
Yes, sir.
I, I think we need to start looking for that person now, and not, you can make it part of your new plan.
Okay.
But we've got other plants somewhere else that we've got to, to deal with, too, and it's not fair for her to work every day, so, um, I, this commissioner, uh, wants him to do, do you want a motion to do that, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Adams, that needs a comment, and then we.
No, go ahead, I'm, I'm with you on that.
A move that we authorize Public Works to look into and possibly hiring another, I don't know the name of it, JR, a water technician?
A, a water, a, a water plant operator.
Water plant operator to back up, uh, Wiley.
Second.
There we have proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor, seeing five to say an aye.
Aye.
If there's a like sign, the ayes have it.
So, my other comment that I would like for is, the reason why I was saying pull the date in, is because if you put it out thirty years, it's very easy for commissions, including us. We've, we've looked at things like that, where we go, ah, that's not something that we really gotta think about, I'm gonna be out of office before that ever comes about. If you do it eight, ten years, then there's a potential that some of the newcomers that are replacing three of us actually make a decision on it, and have to keep it in the forefront of their mind instead of in the back.
Okay, with that, just go to ten, nothing, and then revisit it in ten years. Let's go to ten on the terms, Julianne.
Ten years, okay.
That's one million at ten years, zero interest.
So, that'll be about right.
It could, it could go up if they end up needing two hundred grand next year to further go into this. They, hopefully, the commission at that time would add that to, you know, the, the top of that, to where if they ever started making money, they at least had an avenue to pay theirselves back.
So, we're good, ten, one million, ten years?
We'll, we'll run the scenarios and bring them back, and then we'll figure where you guys wanna land.
Okay. All right, that takes care of that. Let's go to item B, the fee structure. No, wastewater connection fees, sorry, item A, page two ninety-seven.
Yes, sir. Um, you guys are, requested us talk about connection fees, because right now, they're currently waived, and I know we wanted to talk about it before we saw the development. We were, uh, just put kind of a agenda item here to speak about where we wanna head. There's currently some I was looking for in the, in, in the current fee schedule. Uh, do we wanna continue to waive, um, the water rates beyond, well, I mean, we've waived the connection fees up to this point for the, the ARPA projects and such, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think this discussion isn't gonna be a five-minute one, and I also believe that the, uh, B is not gonna be a five-minute one. Could I recommend to you that we actually call a workshop for next Tuesday morning and discuss those two items in a workshop Tuesday morning at nine o'clock? Nobody hates a workshop more than I do, but only when it's not necessary. It's necessary for these two items, so if you, even if you need to pick another time, if we could take those two and send them to workshop, it would be better.
Talking about election day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
I'm available in the morning, that's fine.
Okay, that's what I was gonna check on. Mr. Suggs, are you available, too?
Yes, sir, it's, uh, five o'clock, uh, Commissioner, we're not done with the question.
So, let's do nine o'clock on the twentieth, whoops. We can bump them.
Yeah, send him over to the room like, we've done that before.
Yeah.
I will not be available next Tuesday.
I know.
You wanna find another date?
Yeah, Wednesday or Thursday would be fine. Peter, do we wanna try to get through what we have and see how far we get, since we have to be here till five oh five?
If we ain't gonna get through this, we got a five oh five this afternoon, and that fee schedule's just gonna make this discussion we had look like nothing, so if we could, uh.
What about the twenty-first? Has everybody?
I'm available in the morning.
Wednesday, the twenty-first, looks, I'll look good.
Okay, what time?
Nine o'clock.
Laura. Laura. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
The twenty-second's better for me.
Thursday, the twenty-second. How does everybody look on twenty-second?
I can cancel them.
I feel like we're in a commercial.
I know. No, it's, all right.
Hand me the pin. I'd have, it'd have to be in the morning. How long is it gonna last?
Twenty-second, twenty-second at nine o'clock, all right with you, Commissioner?
I'm good with it.
I'd look, yeah, yeah.
As long as I.
Twenty-second at nine o'clock.
We get out here by twelve?
By when?
By twelve?
Well, we should be able to, but we've probably just jinxed it.
Twenty-second's not good.
Okay, twenty-second's not good.
So, let's go, let's go look at the nineteenth. Can we do Monday, the nineteenth?
I can, at nine o'clock.
I can. I can. We got pre-agenda meeting, but we can do that quickly. Maybe we can do nine thirty.
What are we talking about?
Okay.
What date are we talking about on?
Monday, the nineteenth at nine o'clock.
That works for me.
I I can make that.
Okay, let's do Monday at nine o'clock, and then we'll do pre-agenda after that meeting, Julian?
Yes, sir.
And that'll be workshop on item, let me make sure I.
A and B.
A and B, which is the connection fee and the fee schedule.
A and B.
Nine AM?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we are going to take items A and B off the table today. And let's go down to item D then, administration, old Ronnie Clark building, three sixty-five. Julianne, you got that? I know.
Bean counter, that's really a difficult thing for you to do to me. Um, okay. Um, yes, sir, the Ronnie Clark building or that what we use, what we refer to as the old Clark building was purchased many years ago by boards for the purposes of court operations. The original intent in two thousand and nineteen was to move the state's attorney's office out of the courthouse and over there, and then to utilize the space the state's attorney's office is using for other court operations. Most of our court operations are in need of additional space. So it's we, in nineteen, we issued a bid, and the bid came back for what the state's attorney's office needed, far exceeding the budget, and that was pre-COVID era. So you can assume where we would be today is triple what it was over budget at that time. So there's been several different options on the table. We did meet with the state's attorney's office this year and kind of came to mutual consensus that I'm not sure that this is going to be the best use of space for them. We also met with Mark Weinberg, who's the court administrator, and Judge Case, who's the chief judge for the Seventh Judicial Circuit, and discussed the option of what it would look like or or if they would entertain us liquidating that property altogether, disposing of it via surplus, and then coming up with a better long-term solution for court operations and what is down there. Both the court administrator and Judge Case gave their approval for that to be done. If the board wants to dispose of it, it would be declared surplus, and then a value would have to be ascertained at board direction and then issued via sealed competitive bid for purchase on the street. Alternately, we can keep it, and the board can tell us what they would like to do with the building. It has been the interior of the Clark building, parcels one, two, and three have been demoed. So it is truly just the shell of the building, the exterior walls and the roof. The one additional parcel there that's was was the children's advocacy center, it was remodeled. Now, parcels one, two, and three were purchased with court improvement funds. So the proceeds would go back to court improvement. Parcel four was purchased and remodeled with general fund. So the general fund would be reimbursed for their portion of that. Seeking board direction.
Julianne, I have a question. How much did we spend on the engineer? Do you remember that? Or do we capture that?
Uh, we can capture it. I don't have it in front of me. The total amount of the renovations was one forty-four, two fifty-six. So given what the the generally accepted is, it would mean the engineer. Now, I'm talking about children's advocacy. You're talking about court improvement or the state's attorney's office? Which one are you talking about?
For state attorney's office needs.
County hired Skinner.
Yep, I can definitely go back and tell you I do not have that information available today.
So really, what we want to talk about today is do we want to get evaluation on the building to set a minimum bid mark for it is what we're talking about today, right?
Board direction, yeah. Do you do you guys want to deem it surplus and and assess a value to these buildings? Or do you want to do something else with the building?
Mr. Adams, Zach?
The building that's remodeled, I mean, what is, is there any alternative use that we foresee that we could use it for? Like possibly IT?
Sure, it is office space. I I don't know the condition of it. You could move any division or department into that space at at any time. I'm sure it would need a little bit of renovations for whatever division's going to end up there.
It would need serious renovations, not a little bit of renovations. The inside of that's gutted.
No, the the one that we remodeled already.
I'm trying to separate the one that's remodeled.
One to the west of the main Clark building.
Yes, or the little small building.
Just the cost to remodel and do everything, I almost think.
Originally, that was part of the original remodel on that. But so like you said, in today's dollars, I'd be shocked if it wasn't three million to do. But in all fairness, you know, when the the architect went and met with the the court and with the with RJ and his team, Mark, and and all, they wanted quite a few things in there that may or may not have been totally necessary, such as bullet, full-length bulletproof glass walls in every office all the way around the building and things like that. But I still think it would be a couple of million dollars. And it sounds to me like, from what I understand, that the courts are not really wanting to move over there anyhow to that building, even if we did come up with the the two or three million dollars it would cost to to remodel that building.
Well, their remaining concern is still security. And so if they're not opposed to moving, but they would want full-time security, contracted security to be there and to the state's attorney's office to to ensure that they're safe.
Can I be clear, I guess, because I don't think I was clear, I suppose? I'm talking about parcel four alone, peeling it off for potential use so that we don't go and say someday, we need office space, and we need to spend a million dollars rehab the area down the road or something where we could utilize that. Because we don't have that much invested in that. And then selling off the other one, two, and three is what I'm suggesting. I don't know what that uses. I don't know if we have a group that needs it today. But like he's saying, if we remodel one, two, and three, it'd be millions of dollars. We already kind of remodeled the other one that would use a little bit. Why would we not want to hold on to that for a little bit just to see if there's a need? And potentially, I mean, depending on what happens with the tax collector and other things, we have a new tax collector coming in, we we have our IT and upstairs of that, there there could be a need for relocation of that. And to be honest with you, as an IT professional, that data center is the best place for data center ever. So it's just something to think about, that it'd be a lot less cost-effective to hold on to that for maybe a year, see if there's a need that comes up, and slide off the other three. Just an idea.
Commissioner Turner.
So two, three, and four was what we bought or did the court.
The court bought what I have designated as one, two, and three. Four is the building in question that Commissioner Adams-Zach is questioning whether or not we retain, regardless of what we do with one, two, and three. On page three sixty-seven, I've tried to number them, number one, two, three, and four.
Let me see what number I'm on.
So number four is the furthest west building.
Four is the one furthest.
Yeah, by the first federal building.
Is it tied on to two and three, or is that separate?
It's contiguous, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I think they share a wall.
They do.
Yeah.
Correct, they share a wall.
Yes.
And they're connected.
They do, yes.
They have a mutual wall.
I'm sorry?
They can be sold separately, though. I think they sell all the other buildings down there separately that are connected by walls.
Yeah. How many square feet is number four? Do we?
Twenty-five eighty-six roundly, twenty-five eighty-seven according to the property appraiser's office.
There you go.
So basically, what I'm hearing you say, Mr. Adams-Zach, is for twenty-five hundred square feet, keep that partial that we spent right around two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay.
And that's a bargain for property down there by a huge margin right now.
And that's number four?
Yes, sir, that's number four.
So what do we do with one, two, and three?
Get rid of them.
Yeah, we don't hire, we can't just declare them surplus, hire a realtor, and let let them go out on the street?
No, sir.
I mean, we've got to auction them off.
Yes, sir. State statute identifies the the way in which the board is allowed to do it. And you can, it is by sealed competitive bid, and high bid wins. The board must establish the minimum bid threshold.
Could we get a base appraisal?
Yes, sir, at at your direction.
So then when we put it up for auction, we could put a minimum bid on it of whatever amount the board decided to at that time.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea what it would cost to do an appraisal? Leota, would you know, you kind of?
A commercial appraisal is going to cost more, obviously, than a residential. I hate to throw a number out, but I would say, you know, a home appraisal runs five hundred to seven fifty. And so it's going to be above that for a commercial, and plus you've got three months.
Okay, could we look into that? I mean, obviously, this is a time sensitive and got to be done by the next meeting or something. Maybe we could look into it. And if I think if everybody can agree that they're interested in getting rid of some of these buildings, I don't, I really don't see a reason for the county to keep them. If y'all seem to think you want to keep one of them for a while, that's okay with me. But maybe we could look into what it would take and give us some advice, and maybe tell us what an appraisal would cost and that sort of thing. Because I definitely think we need an appraisal on one, two, and three if we're.
So am I authorized to go ahead and get the appraisal, or you just want to know what it would cost?
Well, that's where I was, that was one I was going to ask. So if we're talking less than a few thousand dollars, do you have the option just to call and get three quotes? Or is it something you have to?
Yes, ma'am, it falls under normal procurement. So anything under five thousand would be one quote.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I I am tired of seeing this not being utilized downtown. I think it's a blight in our downtown area. And even though we cleaned it up as much as we could, and I just think it's something that we do need to deal with, and I appreciate it getting to this point, but I think that we need an appraisal because otherwise, we're we're going to throw a number at it, even if we base it on what the property appraiser says. We throw a number on it, and then what if we miss the mark?
Give us an appraisal number, Leota.
I can just tell you what the property appraiser is saying.
Would you think three grand would cover an appraisal?
Oh, yes, sir, I think you're within that, definitely.
Why don't you just make a motion that says that you'll put three grand in it, or they can negotiate one? Do what?
Okay, well, I don't know that we have to put a number on it, do we? I think you just get three quotes.
We have to give them the ability to spend up to, not not to exceed that number. Then they can go ahead and hire an appraisal.
I don't really need that. Just tell me you want an appraisal.
Yeah.
That's right, Terry, Terry can do that without any consent up to five thousand.
We're good.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Would you get an appraisal? Would you get an appraisal on our building just in case you would need it in the future? I mean, there, it can't cost much more in case, you know, next year, they say, you know, this isn't going to work for us. It won't fit IT, it won't fit this, it's just sitting there, we want to sell it. So go ahead and get it too.
Just make sure they do number four by itself, and then they can appraise the other three because those are three, the other three are court money. We got to give them their money back.
So so my comment to that would be appraisals are usually only good for about six months. And so if you got an appraisal today, a year from now, that appraisal isn't worth anything. So you've just spent good money after bad.
But it at least give you an idea.
It does give you a baseline.
Mr. Adams-Zach, you have a question?
Yeah, I just was wondering if we wanted to, when we get the appraisal, you want to do them separate or together, one, two, and three?
I think we just set it separate.
Yeah, I I like that idea. I just wanted to see what the rest of us thought.
All four?
So you put one, two, and three together, and four separate.
So two appraisals?
Two appraisals. Yes, I got it, yes, ma'am.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Anything else we need to do on that, Julian?
No, sir.
Okay, good. Item F, enhancement of the golf cart community?
Move approval. I'm being serious, we talked about it twice so far.
All right.
They basically got a golf cart community on both sides of the road. They went and looked at it. The only thing that I would like to add is is that Public Works actually put it in there, which I'm not upset about, but Public Works actually put it in there that they that they recommended eleven signs. Help me out.
Yeah, I had, I had, I believe there's eighteen locations for signs coming off of the main drag.
And we were going to try to make somebody pay for them. Who are you going to make pay?
Yeah.
There's fifty people or eighty people living in this neighborhood. You're going to make somebody go spend five thousand dollars' worth of time trying to get everybody to give three dollars for these six hundred dollars' worth of signs? Can we just pay for the signs and go on and do the golf cart community? We've been doing it for a year.
You still got allotment money.
I'll be happy to give a, what is that, eighteen times sixty? Well, six hundred for a thousand dollars? I'll be glad to give a thousand dollars of my money towards paying them signs for the golf carts.
Let's just move to approve. Can I get a second, Mr. Turner?
I'll second it.
Where are you at?
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. That's what the problem was, this hearing aid is going down.
He's got it covered.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next item is item G.
Thank you for doing this, JT and crew. We've been, they've been working on this for a year, trying to, there's more to it than just.
It's a lot.
Doing it, yeah, thank you.
Okay, the easement here on page three eighty-six. JT, you got that?
Yes, so easement on Kingfish Avenue out in the Boswick area, there is construction that's going to take place on that property. And the current drainage easement runs through the center of the property, and they just want to move that to the edge of the property. We've not done anything with it, but the citizen is allowing us to keep that drainage easement in case we do need to do anything in the area for future.
So currently, it's not being utilized for drainage?
Correct.
And they're going to move it now?
Just move it to the border of the property instead of down the side.
So it's right now in the center of the property, it's going to move to the side of the property.
And that wouldn't interfere any future use of it at all, doesn't matter where it is?
No, we're good.
Need a motion, move, rule.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Okay, next. JT?
The easements on Amberjack Street, I believe we have three. There's been a fourth one that's also come back and given us the drainage easement on their properties coming on the Dunn's Creek side of Amberjack. Our next step, if these are approved, is to talk to the property owner on the backside of these properties so that we can establish some drainage going through those properties to the creek on that person's property because the neighborhood frequently floods with any rain. And we need this to help get the water out of that area.
What are they going to expect from us down there? Are we going to put in lots of money to fix this?
No, if these are approved, we're looking at putting in a couple of cross culverts right on Amberjack to get to the other side and just re-dig the swales. Nothing really more than what we were doing on West River Road when we were just doing ditch work.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
That's in District One, isn't it?
No.
Well, that's why we're even having a discussion about it, because it's not in District One. I'm sorry. Getting a little late, I got to have some leeway, Mr. Chairman.
Go get a Snickers bar.
What 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 happens if the one in the back doesn't give it to you? You're still going to be able to proceed with some drainage or?
Possibly, they would just have to be retention swales instead of transporting all the way back. But I want to talk to the person in the behind those properties before we do anything.
Okay, move approval.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Drainage easement on Cheffy Road and Boswick.
Cheffy Road, also in in Boswick area off of West River Road. The end of Cheffy Road becomes a private section and is frequently flooded with rain. And one gentleman on the road right at the transition where it goes from county road to private has given us a drainage easement on the side of his property that leads down to the canal behind his house. We're going to do about a ten-foot-wide swale to run the, and a water cutout to get the water off of Cheffy through the swale down to the canal.
And I will tell you that we've we've been out there when this first came up, once I got elected, and we got out there. This has been an ongoing issue in that area. And I appreciate the fact that you're coming up with a solution, and you reached out to the citizen and that we can get this going. Because when you're setting up the property that's being affected by this runoff, it is truly washing out their land.
It is.
And and so they've got, they've got some serious problems. So I appreciate this going forward. So move to approve.
Got a proper motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Trying to spit it out.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. All right, next item, acceptance of sewer easements?
Yeah, these go with our septic to sewer. Everything that's going into the ground when when we put in our grinder pumps, this is just a perpetual easement so that we can maintain those grinder pumps. And we've already got all of the TCEs and their user agreements from the citizens.
Rich, have we have read their last one by resolution or? Okay. I'm sorry I missed that, so.
I think if this is the one, help me out, JT, but I think if this is the one that we actually went and recorded some of them, but they weren't officially approved. And then there was some more of them after that that we need to get approved or whatever.
This is to finish it off.
And so by by approving this today, we're actually accepting the ones that have already been recorded in there and these new ones that should have been, that need to be recorded also, I think, if I'm not mistaken. And with that, I'm willing to make a motion that we accept these drainage easements.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero seven six. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Okay, we've already done public comment on miscellaneous items. We will come back to a special board meeting next Monday for item A and B. And clerk of the court, Mr. Reynolds, he's not over there, county attorney, Rich Commando. Thank you, sir. And county administrator, Mr. Terry Suggs. We'll go back to Mr. Rich Commando. Too late, you lost your turn.
So at our next meeting, if everybody's able to come a little bit early, we need to have an executive session. There is one lawsuit where we've been provided some, a proposed offer, There is one lawsuit where we've been provided some, a proposed offer, which I don't think is going to go anywhere, but we have an obligation to present it to you anyway.
Do you want to do, that's the 27th at nine? Do you want to do earlier, or do you just want to come in and, and start the meeting and go like we normally do?
It's up to you. If you want to do it at nine.
About on the 19th.
Thank you, that's what I was going to say. That's twice we agreed today, Commissioner.
The problem is on the 19th, because.
You actually did three or four.
Because of the election on the 20th, Baker County moved their meeting to the 19th. Sorry, I can't be here on the 19th.
All right, so the 27th, we can call our meeting to order, then go into executive session, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, why don't we do it that way now?
Thank you.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, county administrator? Nothing for y'all. Okay, wow. All right. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Pickens?
Long meeting, but good meeting, good discussion this afternoon. School has started, and so I'm sure all the kids are excited to get back to school. It was kind of a crowded situation going by Middleton Burney yesterday, and, but it's all good, and then there'll be a groundbreaking for the new elementary school Friday, Friday morning in Crescent City at the new property. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have your light on for something? You're not a commissioner comment. You'll have to wait. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to interject with Mr. Pickens, talking about the school system. I just wanted to bring, if it's not to your attention, please pray for the Black Panthers, the football team, and the family of Robert Gillen. He's a 15-year-old sophomore that passed away during the night. They don't know why the young man died, but he was deceased this morning.
I heard that, sorry.
Tragic.
It is tragic. Commissioner Adams-Zack, any comments? Commissioner Turner?
Yes, sir, and I'm not wanting to do anything about throw this out today, that's it, for future possible consideration. Do we want to look at some of our boards and actually put term limits on some of those boards? I really believe that a few of them are getting stale, and there are certain boards that we don't have the issue that you have to really work to find somebody to be on them. I'm not going to mention any boards at this point or anything else, I'm just saying that I don't know that it wouldn't be in the best overall long-term for the county if we didn't have term limits. Obviously, today, we took one of them off the library, but I don't know that that was one that ever needed to be on there in the first place. It's like affordable housing, it's very difficult to find somebody to be on the Affordable Housing Committee, and there are certain ones that are like that, and it may be something that we don't want, that we don't want to consider, but I'd sure like to at least throw it out there for consideration. Do we want somebody to start looking at the possibility of term limits on some of the committees or not?
I think, do we mind if I make a comment?
Not a bit.
With the fact that three of us are outgoing, I really think we should defer that to the next board, in my opinion, just.
I don't have a problem with it.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and there's our boards that I think it makes sense for, I just would like to have whoever the new incoming people is, they would be a.
Well, I've noticed that term limits a lot of times are very passionate on both sides of the issue. Sometimes, like, I truly believe that a commissioner shouldn't serve over eight years. I know it's, that's the way I feel, just because, especially now that I've gone through it after seven or eight years, you don't really want to be here anyhow that much, it's not like you did when you first come in.
You are getting a little stale.
I want to be here. I want to be here.
Well, good for you. I mean, make it 12 then, if that suits you. But there, you know, I don't think we have that big of an issue. It's not that big of an issue around here, but they got counties in other areas, they've had people belting around there for 20-something years, and they don't, they don't perform anymore in a lot of instances. They just, they're there. So I mean, like I said, term limits is one of those passionate issues that, that you may or may not want, but on the boards, we do have a way to control that, and so I, I think we need to seriously consider, and that's where I'm going to leave it today. I'm not going to mention any certain boards, and I just wanted to open it for discussion. If nobody else is interested in looking at other than me, then we'll just move on.
Now, I, could you repeat what you said, Mr. Adams?
I agree with the idea, I just think that with three of us being replaced in basically a few months, I think I would defer to that board to be able to make that decision for themselves.
On the other side of that, sometimes it's easier to do on the way out the door than it is if you're going to be here four years. But I'm not trying to do that, I'm not trying to pick just issues, but, you know, it's just like, there's other issues that really need to be worked on and decided before this board changes, because of the experience of the current board, and because of whatever. I just, I'm not so sure this isn't one of those issues that needs to be discussed by somebody that's not still running for office, in my opinion.
My thought has always been, if you don't mind chiming in on that.
Not a bit.
Is.
Why I brought it up.
Is possibly that the term limits that we appoint people fall off when we exit office, you know, and that gives a new commissioner, I mean, Commissioner Wilkerson did an outstanding job, not saying that anybody else did not, but you came in and appointed a bunch of different people to board. I think the, the new person gets the, the ability to, to, but with some ways, and some of our boards, they're tied up, their hands are tied, they can't appoint anybody.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
That if you're, if you appoint somebody during your term, that when that terms up, if you're not here anymore, then the new commissioner gets, they get to do that now, really.
Not on all of them, some of them are, some of them go on for.
They're cyclical, they're cyclical, they come in cycles.
Right. Speaking of that, Laura, I was looking at the Development Authority today for some weird reason, and we've only got two commissioners spots, but the ordinance requires three commissioners. So could you fix that?
It may not be right, but on Development Authority, it's me and you and Mr. Pickens.
Right, but it.
At the current time.
But right now, it's just me and Mr. Pickens listed here, although it says three there. So.
Well, they just got me off the list because I'm on the Development Authority.
Yeah, you are, and we need to, but we just need to clean things like that.
For a few more months.
Yep. Okay, Commissioner Wilkerson, comments?
Were you through, Mr. Turner?
I've done enough, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just want to say that to our staff, if you haven't tried the People One, please go get your appointment and try it. I was pleasantly surprised, my husband was too. It, it will save you money, and I think it will save the county money overall in time,